Aaron, can you just let him know?
Keith.
Come from the.
Carol and Karen.
And Carol, Karen.
All right, Joe, we'll get that back on.
Yeah, hold on.
Point with the Energy Committee, they're not here, so we'll push that out to the next meeting for them. Approval of the minutes from November 16th.
Almost.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod, to approve the minutes from November 16th. Corrections needed for those?
I found a few errors.
Okay.
Page three, line three, says Chairman Cove. I think they meant Cole. Make the correction there. Down below, let's see. Down underneath the heading, Ms. Billowitz, one, two, three, four lines in, there's a statement that says she presented two documents with signatures to Town Manager Gunter, Chairman Cole, and Mr. Travers. Mr. Travers was not at the meeting that night, and she did not present the documents to Mr. Travers. Further down, two lines down, the line that starts with VSA 2642, it says pursuant that VSA, which will be on the ballot March 1st, 2022 town meeting, that is also not true. The documents handed over will not be on the ballot in March 22. All to say, we reviewed those documents, and those as presented to the board and myself, they do not constitute an actual petition to the Town of Fairhaven, as those two documents do lack several key requirements under state law to make them actual petitions. I think at best, these documents just represent a little bit of displeasure by a couple of people, that they just, they don't like the revitalization efforts going down, going on downtown Fairhaven, and that's what this is, this represents.
Okay. All right, so Joe had changes, any other folks have changes? Jeff or Rod?
No, I didn't see anything.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the changes?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Abstain because I wasn't here.
Yeah, Carol and Glenn are abstaining.
No.
Because they weren't. Yeah, they weren't here at that meeting.
But you can, I don't think so.
Yeah, you can.
I will make a motion to accept the minutes from November 30th as written.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Second. Motion by Glenn, seconded by Jeff, to approve the November 30th minutes. Same thing there, any corrections or changes needed? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that motion carries? Five minutes for public comment. Anybody for public comment? Department head reports?
So we're still having technical difficulties. Aaron was gonna give his report, but he's out of commission, so I can do the police department in my own.
Okay.
Not a lot cooking in the police department this, over the last two weeks, only four arrests, a little bit of larceny, driving with a suspended license, and criminal trespass. The police department did make another arrest in the series of car break-ins that they've had, and in addition to that, there's another arrest pending. The police department had to, they had to switch their crime reporting system away from Valcor to the new Spillman system. This is what the state's been updating, so it's kind of passed down from the top. The chief and I have been talking a little bit about it. There's a learning curve to learning this new program, like everything else. He's expecting a little bit of delay in information transfer, but it's something they're working through and they'll get through it. The published number, the published police number, we updated our phone systems, the 265-4531 number rings to the inside of the building now, as opposed to just jumping straight to dispatch. So this way you'll get response time a little quicker if somebody's inside the police department.
4539?
4531. And that's all I have for the police.
All right, questions for the police department? Town manager? Do you have any update from Aaron or not?
No, he was supposed to come and we lost him due to two technical difficulties.
I'm sorry, I do have one question.
Go ahead.
That, that number, that's not, you know, if asked, that's not to take the place of nine long line.
That is not an emergency number. That's non-emergency.
Those are non-emergency calls?
Yes.
Okay. Cats in the tree, that's, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, exactly. Oh, town manager, we got some dog park equipment, playground, we got dog park playground equipment that arrived today. I can't remember if I mentioned last time, for 1012 Adams, we are still moving forward with, with that litigation, and I did put a lien on that property. They owe more than $5,000 in tickets that have yet to be paid. Talking a little bit about the Clark property, the 12 South Main, we have a hearing on that property on the 28th, for that property on the 28th with probate court, so we're just about finished with that.
On the 28th, did you say?
Yes, ma'am. We're still doing a lot of cross-training with Eileen. She did payroll this week, she did a dummy payroll to, to me, I'm sorry, yeah, two meetings ago, so we're trying to bring her up to speed. She, she's done the general fund warrant in the past, so we're, you know, slowly making progress. For those who saw digging across the street from Town Hall outside of the park there, they were digging some test pits to check for drainage in that area. The state is pushing through some grant funding for stormwater abatement, in stormwater projects, and that was part of that. This dovetails with what Hillary Solomon came in and talked about three meetings ago. That was part of that. We also talked about water meters, I said less than 100. I wasn't wrong, but there are only 40 that are left, left to be replaced. I did order, the board wanted to kind of a cleaner way to see how our projects are progressing. I did order a Microsoft project, so I'll tinker with that and get you some, some sheets to show where everything's at. And for the, our big, this is disappointing, our railway project, our $75 million grant was not funded, which is disappointing, though not surprising. We were competing against cities like San Francisco, Chicago, Detroit, Northeastern University, people with a lot of money and a lot of expertise and a lot of time to spend writing things like this. So, we did not win that, and sadly enough, Vermont was one of, I believe, four states that did not receive any grant funding for that, for that program, so.
That was the refrigeration facility that we?
There is another EDA program that's also a no-match grant program for things like this. It's a little difficult to deal with, but I think I'm gonna try again. The only way to, to do it is just keep going and trying, so. And that is what I have for you.
Questions for Joe? Old business, fireworks permit. So, we've met a few times on this, we, I believe at our last meeting, directed Joe to kind of get us the final draft, talk with our attorney, and this is the draft that you have brought back to us, hopefully for approval, or at least another reading of it. So Joe, is there anything you wanna?
Sure, so I, I did reach out to CNC fireworks to see what they wanted in the permit. The request was to remove on the old, on the old version, number five, for public displays, and then number seven, it was something about sparklers. I sent it back to legal, and they, they said number five should stay in there, they said taking that out leaves this weird gap for, for town, for other towns, not, not Fairhaven. And that leap, that opens, opens us up to a liability to where, why are we treating one group different than another? For the sparklers, they said can take it out, which I did, though they would have preferred to see it in there.
I would, I would only ask, I only ask to pull that out because of, hopefully the laws wouldn't, like I said, revert back to the way that it was this winter when it gets through the state. So when that does do that, I'm gonna have to come back in front of you guys and then say, even though the state now would allow me to sell, I would still keep number four because that's what I do in Pittsburgh, and it works out great. I've never had any legal issues with Pittsburgh pulling, making Pittsburgh have to have a permit where the rest of the state didn't. But I'm not, yeah, I'm not a lawyer either, so I, I'm not gonna really try to fight that other than I hope that, there's wording in there that, that is, right now it's anyone, but really, most of my sales is out of state. And what this is, what the Vermont law is restricting Vermonters. So I would hope that somewhere in number five, you could just say, instead of saying other than the Town of Fairhaven, other locations in Vermont, other than the town location, other than Vermont, other than the Town of Fairhaven. If, if you put in there Vermont, I think that would cover that my out-of-state sales are still fine, and anybody from Vermont would need a permit, which is the law, the way that it's written right now, which is what we would need to do anyway. The, number six is, you would be the only town asking me to do that, and none of my competitors do that, keep records like that for three years. If that's the way that it's written, I, I mean, I'd rather be, I'd rather be in here, show you guys how we work, come back in front of you in another year, say, hey, it worked out great, you know, can we adjust this or that? I'd rather, I don't want to scrap the whole project as opposed to trying to make something work, but really, if I can't have my out-of-state sales, it's not, I can sell to out-of-state right now in Pittsburgh. They have to drive farther. This would help me get to them easier by being closer to them, but the way that it's written is that would, that would prohibit me from getting out-of-state sales also, and I, that's, that's not, I can't do that.
Which one's doing that?
Number five, because it says for public display taking place in a location other than the Town of Fairhaven, which means anywhere, you know, which means any. So if you guys said anywhere in Vermont, then that would, that would mean that I would have to have a permit from anybody, any Vermonter or any town, before they, I sold them fireworks. But my out-of-state sales, the way that it's written, the way that all the legal has come down to me so far is that my out-of-state sales are still legal and I can still do that. So that's all I'm saying, is that I don't want to run into an issue with you guys, like I'm thumbing my nose at you, when I'm clearly saying I need to sell to out-of-staters.
Questions for you guys?
I don't understand, I mean, legal is saying that we're on the hook for everything that CNC sells?
You would be opening yourself up for making different provisions for different residents, different people.
Huh?
You're, you're saying certain people need permits while other people don't. Okay, Fairhaven, why does, why do the people in New York not need a permit, but the people in Fairhaven do? What's, what's the difference?
Because we're just concerned about harm to properties in Fairhaven. I'm just wondering what they're saying, what is, is legal is?
Honestly, that's how Pittsburgh reads it, that's how Pittsburgh writes my permit, is that the Town of Pittsburgh, I do not sell, no matter what the law is, I do not sell anybody fireworks unless they have a permit from the town. Makes it really easy to get along with the town because they know that I'm not gonna stult anybody in town, your crime rate's not gonna go up, the noise isn't gonna go up, because I'm not gonna do that.
And, I mean, we're, we're dictating, I'm assuming that, we're dictating that people from other towns that don't need a permit shall get a permit anyway.
Well, if they don't need a permit, I don't think that that would be an issue.
But it says that they have, you have to produce, they have to produce a permit.
Yes, and see, number, number three really.
Right, I'm not a lawyer, I guess.
No, I'm, I'm.
Number two really does cover, I have to, I have to follow state law, you know, I have to, I'm not going to break the law, and so to add five, it's kind of like, you're doubling, saying, and you're still not going to, well, yeah, I said by number two, I'm not going to. And by number four, it's really putting the stamp on, no matter what they change the law to, my agreement with the Town of Fairhaven is that I will not sell to a resident of Fairhaven without a permit first.
I can tell you that, just pre- this, I don't understand where the problem you have with number five, quite frankly, I'm gonna go ask our attorney, and our attorney says do this? I'm not smarter than the attorney, I'm not gonna ask them. I look at this, I can tell you my frustration is, and I think we've been talking about this multiple times, I'm good with this the way it is. I'm at the point for myself, if you don't like it the way it is, that's fine, you don't need to, do business here, have a permit, because I, I won't support anything changed more than this right here. So either you, you can do it or you can't.
And honestly, if you guys don't want me here, that was the whole point, is to flesh it all out ahead of time.
But it's just, that's just me.
But I can't, I can't make, I can't pull money out of thin air, I can't make money by not being able to sell to anybody, and the way that it legally is right now, I can still sell to out-of-staters without a permit. So I would hope that it would just reflect that provision, that's all, I'm not asking for anything special other than to be able to do what my competitors are doing around the state.
And what I'm saying is, the way this is written, I think it's just fine, we've already went from $5,000 back to $1,000, if, if this isn't good enough, I don't, I don't wish you any, you know, will, I'm just saying, then, then don't, don't get the permit, don't do it, I'm, I'm not ready to change. That's me.
I mean, when I look at number five, for public displays taking place in location other than Town of Fairhaven, I mean, that doesn't prohibit a, somebody from New York buying fireworks here and going and setting them off privately in their, their backyard, from what I read it.
If that's how you guys read it, then I can sell to?
Public displays, if somebody from New York is gonna buy them and go have a, you know?
Private.
Light them off, light them off in the town park, I think that's a public display. Or not, I mean, how do you guys read it?
I, I think as soon as you put it up on your property so that your neighbors can see it, that's a public display. I mean, it can be construed as, when you get lawyer speak in there. I just, I, I wonder what the, the lawyers were thinking, that's all.
We don't know.
And it sounds like the lawyers are talking, not, you're even really talking about fireworks, you're talking about people's rights, like as telling one people they can't do something and other people they can, and all you're really doing is telling town that they need to have a permit first, I mean, it's.
What the lawyer was talking about was covering the Town of Fairhaven for liability.
Okay, so we, we have a $2 million policy. It covers everything that we sell to people. I mean, that's not nothing either, that's, we carry our, we carry insurance, we, we take, this is serious, this is a, I have a $2 million policy.
So, so am I to understand that you, you don't agree, you, if, if this stays as is, you're not interested?
Well, I can't sell, if I can't sell it to out-of-staters, then, then yeah, how can I be interested? Because, because I can sell in other locations in the state to out-of-state sales. So that was my reason to come to you guys, is that I'd be closer to out-of-state, I'd be able to hopefully recapture some of the clientele I lost from Ruttland Town, but I'm not trying to change Fairhaven, or Fairhaven's nights, or noise ordinances, or.
Not, and, and I'm not trying to tell you where to sell either, I'm just saying that if, if we don't, all we know is that, that we begin, then given advice, that that language is something we should have there. I'm not ready to say that I'm just gonna ignore that. Now, how you interpret that, that, that's, not to me.
If you don't want to change anything of that, that's fine, but I'm, I'm trying to explain to you guys, I need to sell to out-of-staters. So if it doesn't explicitly say that I can.
But we're not going to sit, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you, you can, you have permission to do anything, because I don't know what, whether it'd be against the law or not, quite frankly, I'm just saying, we have here. Again, I.
But, but we are superseding the law, though. Because Vermont has laws, the states have laws, and this is, this is making the, the laws more stringent.
Correct.
That, and we're, we're stopping business.
I.
This is the same, this is the same permit that came from Ruttland, Ruttland sent me this.
Right, Ruttland Town, where I got, ran out of town, this is the same permit of where I got ran out of town, which is what I'm trying to say to you guys.
If you could sell to New York out of Ruttland.
So, they weren't gonna let me sell to anybody in Ruttland Town anymore, and that was the, that was their entire point, and that was, if you read any of the meetings, the minutes from the meetings, if you watch any of the TV from it, you can clearly see what they did. The, the board changed, and then it was everything they could do, I, I didn't change one thing of the way that I was doing business, until the law changed, and then I had to adjust, they didn't, they didn't care about the adjustment at that part, they just wanted it gone, they wanted, and so I did, I came hat in hand to you guys, and I have been very honest and open with you guys about fleshing it out and getting it out open, but I can't have a fireworks store that I can't sell any fireworks to people, I mean, I can't. I mean, so.
For sure.
I'm saying, I will not sell to people from Fairhaven, I will, I will, until the law changes, I will not sell to any Vermonters unless they have a permit in hand, but I need to be able to sell to out-of-staters, so if this can't, if you can't even just put Vermont, or VT, right there where it says. This place, taking, location in Vermont other than Fairhaven, that's, all you have to put in there is in Vermont. And then, then my out-of-state sales, it's not explicitly saying you have the right to sell to out-of-staters, but it's, it's saying, I'm not, I don't want to thumb my nose at you guys, I don't want to come in here and promise you guys that I'm, I'll never sell any, that was the whole point, is to come over here so I can sell to them, and if I can't, then, then you're right, sir, and what sense does I make? All the expense of moving that trailer over here and all the equipment and stocking the shelves, thousands, tens of thousands of dollars, it's, you know, I mean, right now, I'm taking a gamble, just, I mean, that was a fantastic location, front of Home Depot, I mean, come on, everybody has to go there. So, I'm rolling the dice, coming here, but you can't cut my feet out from under me before, I mean, you can even, that's all, that's all I have to say.
Jeff, Carol, I mean, where are you guys?
If that's what our lawyer, who we pay to give us advice, said, I don't think I'm better prepared than the lawyer to go against that. But, that said, it's not terribly clear language, I don't think.
I, I think it's clear that the lawyer is mandating that they, that everybody have a, a permit, regardless of whether their government, their local state government requires her to not. And I don't know how we can sit there and say, you have to have a permit, even though a permit is not available.
Yeah, I mean, like you couldn't go to, I don't know, make up Orwell and get a permit from the fire chief, because they're gonna be like, what are you talking about?
Right.
I would agree.
And, and yet, we're, we're saying, you gotta have a permit anyway, that's ludicrous. I buy fireworks from time to time, not, not in Vermont. I go to Pennsylvania or something like that, because I have family there. You have to produce a license that says you're not a resident of Pennsylvania, period. They won't sell it to you if you're a resident of Pennsylvania. Now, that's changed recently, but in the past, I, I bought fireworks, and you just can't be a, a, a resident of Pennsylvania, which is, I think, kind of odd, you can buy, there's fireworks places all over the place in Pennsylvania, you just can't.
Live there.
You can't live there. Now, they've changed that law, state of Pennsylvania has changed that law, so now you can, you don't have to produce a license, anybody can buy fireworks.
But is the wording here so that someone from Whitehall comes over and buys fireworks, goes back and something goes really wrong, they come back to sue you, can't get the money from you, and therefore, we're the ones that allowed you and we get sued, that's my concern.
Well, then have us as an additional insured on their policy, they protect us. I mean, I, additional insured is, is common language, and it doesn't cost them a dime to put us as an additional insured. That's common business practice.
Jeff?
So, it should definitely be a requirement of the permit that they have insurance, you have it already, but it should, it should say that in here.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't think of it until you sent it, and it doesn't matter to anybody except that it's in here. And then, I guess I would, I don't really want to second guess legal either, I would, I guess I would run back to legal with a, I thought you guys were doing this back and forth, so, I, I guess I thought this discussion was happening outside of here, we were gonna come back with one that you guys both agreed with, but I guess what I would do is send it back to legal and say, can, is there a way to say unless that place doesn't need, doesn't require a permit, right?
Well.
Isn't that, like, New York doesn't require a permit, that's what you're saying?
As far as I know, there is no permitting in, in New York.
So.
I mean, no one's ever came to me with a permit from out-of-state, the out-of-state sales are right now, as far as I've been told, and all my competitors have been told are still in open marketplace.
It feels like you could put a couple of words in there and it would, you know, if necessary.
Yeah, that's really all I'm asking, is just to make clear that Vermonters are different than on the state.
But I still want to run that by legal, I'm not gonna make that change myself.
But we, we seem to be talking in vagaries now. What I heard was, as far as I know, we don't need a permit in New York. I mean, as far as I know, you don't need one, or you do need one.
Well.
So to just to say now, to go back to legal and say, well, the guy from CNC says, as far as he knows, you don't need a permit, so we want to put that in there. It kind of, it's, it's the same issue, you're just, we're just throwing vagaries at it, we're not talking in reality what it is.
So, let me, let me draw an analogy here. Does Home Depot or Lowe's have to have language like this if they sell someone two-by-fours? Because, well, they don't know if you've got a building permit or not. I mean.
Well, no, of course not, but two-by-fours aren't strictly regulated under VSA.
But, but building permits are. I mean, you can need a built, you can need a permit for anything.
You have a, you have a gun shop in Fairhaven?
For your rabbit hush?
How far do you go?
I mean, is there a gun shop in Fairhaven, what, I mean, are they, do they insure you guys?
Hey, there is, Liberty Street.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, I don't know about the insurance.
No, no, I have no idea.
I mean, we're just talking about fireworks here.
But coming, coming back to where we are, and my, my frustration is, justice seems like we, once again, we're going months and not, and seem to not be going anywhere on something that seems to be pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and once again, the lawyers.
But it's his fault.
That's not, that's not their fault, right, it's the lawyers are, are getting so stringent.
But I'm sitting back here saying, okay, but this, they looked at it, the answer is, let's go back, next time we'll get, we'll go back and forth over a word here or a word there, here it is, I'm just saying, here it is, who can believe it?
And I'm saying, support the businesses, and the lawyers are writing something that is so constrictive, no one can do business, so ask them to say, to, to, make them aware that, hey, you know, you're asking a business to insure. to ensure that a person has a, a, a local permit when we don't know if the permit is necessary or not. And how do we, how do we determine that? You, you don't. Just like Home Depot doesn't, doesn't need to per, identify if you need a building permit.
I understand what you're saying, Rod. And it's not that I don't support business. I do support business. I don't feel the risk and liability and everything else. The risk right here for what the gain is, it's not worth it when every time I look at it, I'm saying it's not worth it for me. That's just me.
So what do we want to do? Jeff, what are your, what are your thoughts?
I said my piece.
Yeah, he, he said it.
Carol, what are you thinking?
Still there. Have anything different, Todd? It's, it's very Yeah, I am concerned that we go back and forth too often on stuff. But I also, if we, if we have a lawyer, we need to take their advice, I think, or be involved in the discussion with the lawyer. And I don't know if that's you, Joe, to make sure that there's an agreement by the time it gets here, I guess, would be. Save everybody a lot of time and hassle.
So the question goes back to what do you, what do you want to do?
Yeah.
Can leave it as is. We can go back again and get some clarification on number five again. Or we can do no.
Did they just add number five?
No, number five was from the original permit that we, that we took from Rutland.
Rutland Town added number five way back.
Do we have
And, and was it fine in Rutland and you still sold to New York from Rutland? So why is it an issue now? Is my question?
So they wanted to, they wanted it to, they wanted me, they wanted
Was this in the original agreement?
No, not my, not my first, not, not the first one that I had. Then when they, when the board switched, they added all this stuff to try to pinch me down, and then I was still selling out of state, and that's where the upset came from, from them. And I said, the lawyers have all said, my, my competitors are all selling out of state. This, it was an open marketplace for forty years in Vermont. Just last year is when the Supreme Court changed this for Vermonters, but it had, it did not say anything about out of state sales. So that's how we're all still getting a lot and surviving. I'm hoping to come here to Fairhaven and survive and be here for ten years or more. But I don't want to come here with a false flag saying that I'm going to do something I'm not going to do. I want you guys, I want you guys to clearly know what I'm doing. I don't want to break any laws. I'm not looking to break laws. I'm not looking to separate people, but I'm look, I have, my out of state sales have to be open or
So you asked the question, Joe. This is what I'm hearing. I'm just paraphrasing. But I'm hearing you say, you asked the question, can I require these guys to ask for a permit in Fairhaven or, you know, greater Vermont area, but anywhere else they don't need to ask? And they said, you cannot require people hold them to a different standard. Is that?
Um, I didn't say it in quite that way, but yes, that was the response.
But that's the conversation you had, similar to that?
Yes. So
And they didn't give you a way to do it? There's no, no way to make that happen?
Oh, we were talking around removing number five completely. And number five was, the lawyer said, no, that has to stay in there, so that way you're not discrim, not discriminating, but treating people differently.
Okay, so now the question bodes, can we change it to residents of Vermont? Because we are governed by the, the laws of Vermont, not by the laws of New York, Rhode Island, Massachusetts.
And if we, and I'm, and I'm okay with that, Rod. If he goes and finds out and the answer is, no, we can't. No need to come back and have this discussion again.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with that.
It is what it is. But if they say, yes, we can, then we can do that. And that, and that is the last, that's the last thing I want to, is there anything else that, that is so
No, no, but to be honest with you, sir, I'm not trying to make you hostile and upset.
No, no.
I came here
My frustration is not with you, it's the, it's the process of
I've been very open with you about, I can come in. I can go over anything in between meetings that you guys need me to do. I really want to be here. I really want to be part of this community. I'd really like to get this signed and give you guys a thousand dollars and, and open up in the spring. I just want it clear, that's all. I just want you guys
Number five is in there because of number four.
Yeah.
Correct? Because if you're going to require a permit from anybody that lives in Fairhaven, you have, you can't not require it from other residents in the state. Is that how you're reading it?
I mean, Pittsburgh somehow does it.
If four and five are not in there, not saying that that's the answer, but if they're not in there, then there's no discrimination because you're not saying, Fairhaven, yes, but others, no. Or vice versa.
But you'd still be covered because right now, that's the Vermont state law, and that Vermont state law is that I need to have, see a permit first. Whether from Fairhaven or from anywhere in Vermont. So yes, you would be covered because I'm not going to break the law. I have to agree to the law in one, two, and three.
So when I look at, I, I see four and five are, if you want my opinion of it, I was trying to
We do.
Stay neutral on it because
If you're looking to take them out, then I'd come back and say, boy, if we can just write down, you know, why you're doing a permit, but we can go back, we have to go back to legal again and say, now that we've watered this down all the way so that it has absolutely none, not, not much in it at all, is this okay? And I'm just going, again, we seem to be beaten all around.
Well, you do say that, but sir, it does very clearly say all state of Vermont and United States of America's, I mean, I need to, I, I can't, I'd be breaking the law by breaking the law in one and two and three. I mean, uh
So number two is telling you that you have to ask for permits.
Right, that's what the law is. Until they change it, that's what the law is. I mean, Fairhaven or not, so
And the rest, I thought, was just clarification so people would know what number two is talking about. The way I interpreted it
Number two is, well, clear is, is sale and storage.
Which is what I do.
Oh, yeah, I know, but, but the four, four and five is, you know, it takes the next step. I mean, I, I'd be fine with, you know, since we are governed by the state of Vermont, not by any other state, to, like, four would say, any fireworks to a resident of the, in the state of Vermont. Can't, can't sell to a state of Vermont resident without a permit, without having them demonstrate that they have a permit.
That's the way it was written. I think that they would cover you guys, and I think that I'm saying now.
Does that solve the problem or not?
Well, we don't know that.
I would still run it by legal again.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
And
That was
That's a, that's a valid thing, having the town as co-insurers on my policy. If that's something that's as easy to do as calling the, rewriting my policy, that
Well, you just call your insurance provider and you say, can, can I add the town of Fairhaven as an additional insured?
I mean, that's something I could easily do.
Yeah, it doesn't cost you anything because you're not giving any more, any additional
Coverage.
Coverage.
Yeah, right.
I thought you had, Chris, go ahead, what, what
No, but I mean, in general, four and five are included in two.
Yeah.
Because he has to follow the clause of the state of Vermont anyways. So four or five are not, in my opinion, are not needed in here.
Yes.
Other
I think, I think four came about because we talked about
Pittsburgh, what Pittsburgh does.
What Pittsburgh did and saying not selling fireworks in Fairhaven at all. And I think it morphed into this.
Okay.
So what I hear is saying is that we should, because I, I think we need a clear direction
Strike four and five.
To Joe, to take four and five out of here, you're also deleting seven. And then Joe is going to go back to legal and see if that works or not.
The real question is, is five in there because of four, right?
I think it is.
I think it is.
I think it is, so.
And if
But we'll
Right? That's, that's the direct question. Is five there because of four? If we get rid of four and five and seven altogether, and are we covered by two?
Right. And if it comes, and if they come back and legal says, take four and five out, take seven out, that's good. They're happy with it, and we should be just coming back and signing.
Joe, you can tell them too, that, that discussion about the insurance, putting the town on as part of the coverage.
Well, it should be, it should stipulate
That they need to have a certificate.
What you already have.
Right.
The CNC shall carry two million dollar minimum and make the town of Fairhaven the additional insured.
Joe, I know, I know that the, the lawyers want to cover you and the town. But if you're going to try to tell them that you want this business in town
Glenn's concerned that we're going to get sued.
I am, yes.
I'm concerned we're going to get sued. Watering this down, we're not sitting here discussing these points because it's good for business. We're, we're discussing these points because, or because it's good for Fairhaven. Anything we pull out of here is bad for Fairhaven and good for the business owner.
And good for the business.
Anything, anything we pull out of here will put us at risk.
Well, I think our risk, I think that's what we're going to hear, but I'll go back.
So this is the
But we know that for a fact, Joe. He, he said that to you directly.
Lawyer told me that.
Oh, I thought I just asked that question.
So that's what I said in the beginning. So this is the, this will be the fourth time legal has looked at this, three times from us. Every time legal touches this piece of paper, it costs the town two hundred dollars. I would like, if CNC could front some of that cash.
I would gladly, I would gladly pay two hundred dollars.
Uh, I mean, legal costs, legal costs.
I mean, what are we talking about?
It's, every time they touch it, it's two hundred, two hundred and sixty dollars.
So
Then can it be a conference call instead, instead of you discussing with CNC and then getting off the phone and getting on the phone with a lawyer? I mean, it's got to be a collaborative effort. And if, and if the lawyers, and they, and that three-way phone call, there can be no agreement, then it doesn't come back to us.
I, I'd just like to mention also, I don't think that there's a precedent for people suing over fireworks in Vermont. I don't think there's ever been one. This is not, this is a business that's been running for forty, over forty years in Vermont. This is not a brand new thing that people are getting sued over. There's not been, there's not been one article written about anyone hurting themselves in Vermont.
There's lawsuits when you sell to minors, and that's on you.
Which you, I, I only sell to twenty-one and above, and the rest of the state can sell to eighteen, so I already restrict sales.
It's a valid concern to be cautious.
So I think the direction for Joe from the board is to discuss with the town attorney, removing four and five and seven, adding in a section about certificate of liability, whatever number that ends up being. And then bring it back to the board and we'll have a vote on.
If it's agreed upon.
Yes.
Joe, I'm available also to come here, like, in person, to sit down, discuss, talk.
But I don't think it's the applicant's responsibility to pay for our permit process. That's not
I agree.
We shouldn't be asking businesses to pay for our process.
No, or if you do, all businesses.
Oh, yes. Yes, separate it. So I think that's the direction from the board for this time. Hopefully, the next time we meet, we'll have a answer one right there.
Yeah, or nay?
Yeah, or nay and nay.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you, guys. Appreciate, honestly, I really do appreciate all the time you put into this. I'd rather have it all worked out and, you know, have no issues with you guys. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joe, I'll get hold of you or I'll wait for your call.
Yep.
Thank you.
Grant match for town hall improvements. Joe had some updates on that or any requests?
Yep.
No.
That's, that's like worst case. So we're still trying to get this project underway. Again, I know, I think, I think we've talked about it in the past, but just to, just to kind of reiterate, we started the project back in late eighteen, early nineteen. At that time, we did have Estimator come out and develop some numbers around doing the work in, in the town hall. At that time, all of the work, including electrical refurbishment of walls, heating, elevator, the fire suppression system, all of that was, was estimated at six hundred thousand. Today, just about half of that work is at over six hundred thousand. It's closer to six hundred and ninety thousand for half of the work that we started back in twenty nineteen. We did, as during COVID, we couldn't do any construction. As construction season, as construction started to open back up, we had to pare back a little bit, pare back a little bit, pare back a little bit more. And now we're to the point where it's just, we can't pare back anymore. We've cut the bathrooms. We've limited the scope of refurbishment. We had to cut the heating out. All that's left is an elevator, one ADA compliant bathroom, unisex men and women, and the fire suppression system without a nitrogen pump, which will have to be put in sooner or later. I applied for more grants. I applied for another grant today, asking for another hundred thousand, but again, those are not guaranteed money. I'm afraid if we keep putting this off, waiting and asking for more money, and waiting and asking for more money, the cost will continue to go up, and then we'll just lose our grant funding, and then we'll just be out of a project. All that, we'll talk about the numbers. We have received five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in grant funding. So we have reached out to three funding agencies, and they've supplied us with a lot of cash. The town has supplied a hundred thousand dollars so far. I'm asking today for an additional eighty thousand dollars so that way we can at least get the elevator, fire suppression system in, get that bathroom up and running, and, and get the project rolling. I, I'm afraid if we wait, we, we'll get nothing and have to return more than five hundred thousand dollars.
And that's the priority? I just heard you say that the heating system upgrade is, is off the plate?
We, we came to, maybe not the previous board, but the board before that. And we set down a list of priorities, and the heating system was like number four. We can get three. We, we need to do the bathrooms, and we need to do the elevator because those are ADA requirements. To use the third floor, we need to have fire suppression. Like, those are just the no, there's nothing to cut there.
Third floor, you mean, sec-
I'm second floor. Second floor.
Didn't know if you were putting
We're adding an addition.
They're going to sell fireworks.
Right. Shoot off fireworks.
Yeah, public displays.
Well, but can the current heating system maintain the heat up there? Because you have a bathroom up there, and not enough heat, you're going to have other problems.
Yes.
What, what, which one did you just answer?
The, the heating, the heating system keeps, it, so it's not freezing upstairs. We're not going to have broken pipes, and you're not going to have frozen water.
You put electric heat in the bathroom.
Yeah, or one or two heat pumps are relatively cheap.
For free.
Just about. But the heating system for the, for the town, for the building itself, the first floor, it, it's in good shape. We take, we take good care of it.
Are you, are you, did you throw out the forty thousand from Grant Match and forty thousand from possibly ARPA? It's just a discussion point because when I, when I looked at that, two things hit me. I think our grant match money, I think, Jeff, you mentioned something that, that concerned about whether we have enough
Oh, we'll talk about that tonight.
But, but before we get there, so, so hitting that up was a question for me. ARPA, my, my, the question I had was, this seems like this is exactly what ARPA funding was put there for. Because of COVID, we weren't able to do the construction, the cost overruns are there. It's one-time spending, so I, why wouldn't we look at the eighty, if eighty is what the number is out of possibly ARPA?
I don't have any disagreement with you there. I just think the ARPA funds should go through their review process.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever the process is, what's the highest, but as we, what made me think about that is we, we met as an economic development committee and started talking about, okay, here's our wish list of our possible ARPA projects, and I'm sure other groups, and we'll be doing more. And, but thinking on the line of And, but thinking on the line of COVID impact, one-time funding, that's, that's, there's a lot of boxes you can check and that may be one of them. Okay.
Agreed.
I agree.
Joe's gonna wanna know.
Sooner than now. Yeah, right.
Can I commit ARPA monies without any review process and without any?
I don't think it's advisable whether we can do it.
I don't think so either, that's why I was asking.
I don't know by one, right, whether we, we should have.
You're on the board for another year at least.
It, it, it wouldn't be, it won't be pretty if we commit without at least getting everyone and having everyone get a chance to.
I think there's be a distrust.
I think there's a pretty good case for using the Grant Match money to get you there and then reimbursing it with ARPA.
Can you, can you reimburse with ARPA?
How you sell that to ARPA?
Reimbursing a project that's already spent?
I have no idea, I'm just saying, I'm not really comfortable saying.
Everything I've seen on ARPA won't let you go out and pay and spend and say, I'm gonna pay myself back.
Okay, alright.
Uh, uh, I, that worries me.
What's your Grant Match at, Joe?
Grant Ma, uh, so the, is that 94,000?
So I guess what I'm looking at is it's a, you've received 517,000 in grant funding, you're 80,000 short. And if you scrap the project today, you're 35,000 in the hole that you have to pay back. That's good, so that everyone's on the same page.
Sure, yeah, if we don't do the project, we have to pay back grant funds that it got us this far.
Forty thousand, really? You're spending the.
That's crazy math.
Forty-five. It's, it's, it's the truth though, it's not. Do you spend 35 to stop the project or do you spend 80 and get it done?
Or the timing of it, can we put it, the whole 80 on, uh, I think that's what you said Glenn. Uh, the whole, put the whole 80 on ARPA, uh, can, can we do that physically?
And then I, I don't know, the, the other one, the other thought is saying, when you, you know how we, we're gonna be talking, uh, not tonight, in our next meeting about the, the warning articles, uh, for town meeting? Did we have a surplus that we can ask the voters, can we put X amount of money towards, uh, filling whatever that gap is there?
Can you kind of put 80,000 away currently with the grant fund match? I mean, this project isn't gonna be started for six months anyways.
Um, it'll be a few months before cash actually leaves our hands, yes, but.
Yeah, but you can't commit.
I'm saying you have to be ready to spend your.
Oh, no, we need to commit. It's, I, we're USDA is waiting on us to say, here's the money, I have a contract in my hand that's ready to be signed. The, the thing is, it's been put off because of the, because of COVID for more than a year. We've had two extensions on all of these grants already, this, this money disappears.
They're ready to take it back.
They, they don't want to, they really don't, but at the end of the year, the money's gone.
We have, in our, am I reading the reserves right to say in our municipal building, we have, we have 103,924?
Calendar.
Count, so at the end, talking about weeks?
Oh, no, no, not the, next year.
Oh, okay.
Next year, yeah, not, not weeks, I'm sorry.
But to get that 80,000, when I look at the reserve account for municipal building, have we got, is that, are you telling me that whole 103,924 dollars and 47 cents is all spoken for? So I can't go and take 80,000 out of that and just do it? That way I don't have to worry about, I'm just taking money out of here and having to pay back.
That money's committed.
It's all committed?
That money's committed.
To this project?
To this project.
Okay. That answers.
Well, the 3,924 is not.
Well, there's 3,000.
There's, there's, almost 4,000 already.
Because that, that would be what I was.
9876.
I keep coming back to all the options and going, I hope, I hope ARPA works out because I don't know how you get there and any of the others.
When, uh, how long does it take to hear on ARPA, I might have missed that.
We've already gotten half our payment.
Yeah, we've already got half the money, so there's 300.
It's doing your due diligence with the public.
Getting input and priorities and making sure that it's a.
And we should start that process.
We're, we're already out, I know zoning has already put their list together, EDC has. We, we were gonna do that as a first step and then if I'm jumping out too soon, just kick me out of here. But then, but then the next process was to say, call some information meetings, bring some people together, say, hey, here's the, here's the wish list, different groups come out, what do you have? And then try to prioritize so that be by the time, we wanna make sure, really, timing wise, you have to have that, your priority list and your project list together before March, there's a date in March that has to be done, so it's gotta be done sooner.
Joe has a contract now that needs to be signed and they're gonna pull it back.
I would rather sit here and say, I, I, personally, I earmarked 80,000 from Grant Match to do this project so that we didn't lose the grant funding and a lot, rather than say, uh, we, by the way, there's 80,000 less in ARPA because we already used that.
Is that a motion or not?
But, well, just, I, I just want, I'll second it for discussion.
But 76, because I want the other four to come out of the municipal building.
I'll, I'll second his motion for discussion.
So Jeff.
I haven't a clue.
He'll get you, he'll get you the actual numbers. Motion by Jeff to use the, um, Grant Fund Reserve Account.
Anybody sees a better way, let me know.
Seconded by Glenn and discussion.
And, and the only, the discussion, I wanna understand, when you start talking about the buckets of money that you have out there, you have ARPA funding out there, 700, over 700,000 dollars. That's pretty much money that was given to you, you go spend, you don't have to worry about matching funds or anything like that. With the infrastructure bill that's out there, there's a whole lot of grants that are gonna be, that are available, but they require match. If we take the 80,000 dollars out of our match, understand.
I think you have to put it back.
There's, there's not much left when I looked in here for us to take advantage of the infrastructure money. And we have a lot of.
I think the cost overruns blew the 4% budget. I guess that's what I'm saying.
So when, so when we put the budget together.
I'm gonna go out there and say that.
So, so what I hear you saying is we'll take it out and we'll put in the budget we're gonna be working on in a little while, we put 80,000 back in.
I had 100 in my head.
100,000.
But I didn't know we were spending 80 tonight.
Yes.
Well, well, because, yes, this window of infrastructure money that you're gonna have and, and grants out there is.
It's crazy not to be able to take advantage of that money.
But that's exactly where we're at now though, if we don't take advantage of the 517, we're gonna lose.
That's right.
Right.
It's the same money.
Joe's got a comment.
It's, it's an idea. You can also, um, we like to, we like to, and I am the same way, prefer to use cash. Um, you can also get a short loan at 2%. That could, that could be done in just a couple of days and then I could.
What benefit is that to us?
Well, then you would keep your Grant Match for anything that per, you know, pops up between now and next March.
It's cash flow.
Yeah, it's a matter of cash flow, not necessarily.
You're talking months of loan, not years.
No, to, to fill the gap, until we know.
Well, yeah, until we know, it's the same way, you could do that.
Can, can we do that?
For the next round.
While we determine if we want ARPA money to do it?
Can ARPA money pay?
Just as a cash flow, is it?
Can ARPA pay off debt?
Debt, I don't know the answer.
I don't know the answer to that either.
Is it, it's not that unless you spend it. If you apply for a loan and you were approved for a loan, okay, but that's the last money you spend. Okay, while you, well, because I heard March, okay, for ARPA.
You have, you have, you have until 2026.
No, no, but you have to do, set the priorities. We have to do all our due diligence.
I do not believe you will have any decision made on ARPA for six months.
We, we have, we have to do something we're not known for and that is get it done. Get it done, because we would so, it'll be prior to time and we'll lose money at the other end.
Alright, so there's a motion, any other discussion on that? I know there's.
What is a motion?
I don't know Jeff.
The mo, the motion is to take, you made the motion to take 80,000 out of grant?
We could always.
I just wanted it read back.
I know.
76,000.
You wanna speed things up, put it on the ballot.
So there's a motion to use
Yes.
the remainder of the, um, what was that fund, Glenn?
The debt match fund.
The buildings fund and then take the, municipal building fund and then take the additional amount needed out of the, um, Grant Reserve Account.
Which is 76,700. Total of 80,000.
Is that part of your motion?
That was my motion.
The rest of the.
No, no, I wanna make sure we didn't lose, that was a motion and then Rod made the statement about.
I'm just playing off of what Joe said.
Put it on the ballot.
Uh, I mean, if you wanna make a decision in a reasonable amount of time, put it on the ballot.
I just, I don't think there, that company's not gonna hold that bid for.
No, 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 you, you get the loan. Secure the loan. You don't, if you don't spend it, you're not paying anything on it.
We could use the loan as the last resort, yeah, because we already have
Well, the other thing that is.
Everything but that much, so we would spend that in the grant money and everything is first.
You also have a 31,000 dollar contingency fund on the project, right, that may cover some of this?
Well.
I like your optimistic approach.
Yeah, you're anymore.
Okay, I'm just asking.
It's, I mean, in the best world, I'm hoping we don't spend all of that contingency, so that way we can say we came under budget, but it isn't, I expect. To, to be honest, I think.
So what exactly are you getting for your 180,000 dollars?
You're getting an elevator, uh, rewiring, replumbing, um, a fire suppression system. And there was one more thing. A bathroom, ADA compliant bathroom.
Stop sticks.
So that way the second floor will be usable.
So as I understand it, it's the minimal fire suppression, we're gonna have to add to it someday?
Um, this is only gonna cover the firehouse and the auditorium. Uh, there is a nitrogen pump that should be with it, but it's 20,000 dollars.
What's nitrogen pump for?
It keeps it from rusting away.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, it's the inner gases, so, yeah, okay, yeah, okay, I got it.
Okay, any other further discussion?
Just, can I?
Go ahead.
Milking the Grant Matches, that's kinda scary.
I have one.
I, I, I would prefer a loan if that's possible.
I guess that's what I was gonna ask you, was what your thoughts were. What does a loan look like in your mind? And what are the payments and how does it fit in your budget?
Um, so payments wouldn't start until, oh, so we'd have the budget for this time, so it'd be, uh, 80,000 over five years, 2%.
Simple interest, right?
25,000 a year, basically.
It is simple interest.
It is.
Really?
More like 15, right?
Yeah, I was guessing high.
So it's 81,600.
Either way, you gotta get it somewhere. But that would save you your Grant Match.
But then you have a loan, we have loans on every piece of equipment that DPW is.
Agreed.
Bought, we have way too much on our boats.
16, 16,200 payment.
And I guess I'd use the funds, I would probably use the funds you have and then if you need a loan to take advantage of the next grant opportunity, talk about it then.
But you, what you can do is, you can pay the first payment out of the Grant, uh, the Grant Match or some emergency reserve. So you're paying 16,000 and change.
Can you do that?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Murky to pay for debt out of, I mean, it's the same, but.
It's the same thing, it's just that you're, you're spending it over five years.
But I don't know if an auditor would like that.
Considering you're paying.
Because you're paying debt now out of, rather than just a project cost. It's semantics, but all those issues are.
I, I can, I, I would agree with you if it was a bond. This is a loan. Kind of a murky thing, but a bond is, uh, it's done differently. This is just a short-term debt to hopefully carry us to the point where we can.
Do we want Joe, do we want Joe to research this?
I, I, I think.
Before we make this decision?
I, I.
Before we empty that account?
I think so.
I think we're all hesitant to do.
It's two weeks.
Empty the account.
Sounds like they need, they need some, a commitment from us.
I just don't really wanna.
Will our next meeting be too long? Or you, do we have enough till we're good? I'm just, you know what you're.
I was really, I know it's pressure and I apologize. I would much prefer some type of resolution today. Every two weeks that I put this off, and this is what I've been dealing with with USDA, they don't respond for a month and all of a sudden my prices go up next month. And then I have to go back to the guy and say, hey, I need a renewed contract and then he raises the price because USDA wouldn't get back with me. I'm afraid if I wait two more weeks, he's gonna be like, yeah, sorry, fire suppression went back up. And that's just, that's where I'm coming from, it's like I've been chasing this, I've been chasing this project. Every time I, every time we got money, we would move forward and then it cost more and then we'd get more money and then it would cost more and we'd get more money and it'd cost more. Unless I sign a contract, I can't stop that ball from rolling.
See, and I'd rather use our Grant Match, Match that we have now for Grant Matching. If we have to do Grant Match in the future with ARPA funds, then you take out a loan if need be or put another ballot item on for voters.
So are you, so are you talking, Chris, that we withdraw our motion to use the Grant Match? Make another motion to take a loan?
No, I think you said, he said.
He likes this motion.
He likes the motion.
I like Jeff's motion.
Okay, so we like the motion that we have.
He won't vote on it, but he likes it.
I don't know, I just look at all the loans we have out there, we bought loaders and skitters and.
Tons of debt.
We've got debt crazy and we don't need to, we have money in the bank sitting there right now for Grant Match.
And looking at the capital replacement plan, I mean.
Looking for another truck.
I think you're gonna need debt to finance that plan, so.
Oh, yeah, there's no way, we can't save enough money to buy a truck with cash. Unless you waited 30 years to buy that truck.
That's different, I think that's a.
Yeah.
But we're gonna have to raise taxes to replace some of this money.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, we are.
I, I wanted to be very clear about that.
So, the, the, the value of raising taxes to replace the money versus
Loan.
2, 2,000, or 2,000 or 1,600 dollars for the cost of money to borrow it.
Cost is 1,600. But ARPA money, there is no Grant Match.
Yeah, right, and I'm, and I'm saying that we use the loan as a final, if, if everyone says, no, we don't wanna use ARPA funds for this project, then that's the backup, that's what we do. Otherwise, we get this to get the project going and go after the ARPA funds and make it go away so we don't have the debt. I, I agree, I don't want the debt, but I think this is cheap money.
No, I don't have any problem with that, I'm just, uh, it all seems, we don't know if we can reimburse that loan with.
It's not reimbursing the loan, I'm talking about replacing the loan.
Yeah, I don't think your timeline adds up though.
You put it on the ballot.
Well, construction, if construction started even in two months, even in one month.
Yeah.
I mean, we still got nine months to go.
I guess what I'm saying.
We wouldn't even have to take, we wouldn't even have to pull a loan for another few months. But I just, I need some kind of commitment to tell.
I'm just saying, you make that commitment, you, you have to know where it's coming from one way or another.
Yeah.
So if you can't get it through ARPA, it's gonna come out of here somehow, or a loan.
Okay, so. Well, there's benefits to both ways.
I'm withdrawing my motion, you guys come up with one.
No, 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 don't, don't withdraw. It was up for discussion.
We're still discussing this.
It brought us into the discussion.
I'm throwing Jello against the tree.
I, I mean, I don't have any problem trying something, I just, I'm a little worried you're gonna get six months down and not have.
Decision on ARPA.
Not have a decision on ARPA, not have backed up your budget with additional funds to backfill and have to come up with.
I mean, I'm, I'm back, I'm, I'm still back at the place even though it's the one that has the most risk.
Sitting on ARPA.
Well, they say that it's, we're getting over 700,000 dollars in ARPA. I don't mind explaining to our taxpayers that the best use of us not using Grant Match that stops us from doing infra. I don't mind explaining to our taxpayers that the best use of us not using grant match that stops us from doing infrastructure, not going into more debt, is to take eighty thousand dollars of free money and we've already, we're going to lose forty thousand dollars otherwise, so it's really what we're talking about, we're going to lose forty thousand dollars. We're, it's the best use of that ARPA fun, money I have and, and at the end of the day, I'll take, I'll take the hit.
I think it's an easy risk.
Right, that's the place, the, the place to get it.
But does it require all of that whole process before you can even use the funding?
I think.
Does it require public meetings, public hearing and all of that stuff before you can even allocate the funding?
They, they do, they do recommend that, I don't think it's a requirement.
It's not, it's not statute.
From, from.
Crazy not to do it.
Oh, we have to do it.
We need to do it, we need to do it.
Yeah, we agree.
I mean, I don't mind saying that the plan is to, if the plan is to use ARPA funding for it, and if for some reason we go through the, the process and the, and the taxpayers of Fairhaven saying, no, I want to go into debt or I want my taxes to go up. Hey, I, I'm, so, so be it. I, easier to get a budget passed if you want your taxes to go up. Uh, I know a way we can keep eighty thousand dollars out of going up. It's called spending ARPA money.
So Joe, will it help if you, the motion, what if the motion was?
I'm still going to try to get you to backfill that grant match.
To use, uh, S R money to commit to the eighty thousand in S R money.
Yes.
And if that's not viable, then to go to grant match.
I know.
I didn't understand the first word, S, what money?
So we would allocate eighty thousand of S R money, if that is not eligible to be funded, that way we would revert back to using eighty thousand of grant match.
ARPA?
Yes.
So am I amending this motion or withdrawing it and redoing it?
That's perfect.
You think that's, would work?
That's, they're, they're looking for a commitment of funds, so if I say we're going to use some ARPA funds.
If that is not eligible because of.
With discussion amended?
You, you, you'll need to amend your motion because it's the backup. If ARPA doesn't go, your motion is what we need to.
Yes.
To pay for.
That, I don't know.
Tell me one more time, though. Just to make it clear.
Here's, here's.
It's your motion.
Yeah, but it's money.
It's kind of pseudo-committing that eighty thousand.
It is.
Yeah.
We, it's kind, we have to basically say it's committed.
Which is going to be, yeah, you're not going to be able to use it for.
Other things.
We, we.
So your motion should be, you use eighty thousand dollars in ARPA funding. If it's not available, we'll come back and make another motion to use grant funding.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Grant funding or loan or whatever.
Yes.
With, with loans being as cheap as they are, sixteen hundred dollars for eighty thousand for five years, that's pretty cheap. It's almost zero interest.
You make sure that's a fixed rate.
Yeah.
So Glenn's withdrawn his motion.
Oh, the, the second.
The second, and Jeff is going to withdraw the.
Sure. You need a motion.
State a new motion. Right, or not? I don't know, somebody else can make another motion if they want.
I don't know if I want to spearhead ARPA.
Right?
I, I, that's the, that's, at the end of the day, that's the right answer. I just don't know how to.
It's one-time cost, I mean, that's.
Yeah, it's, it's a perfect ARPA project, but everyone has got, well, not everyone, but majority's going to agree.
We owe, we owe, we owe a lot of explanation and, because anything else.
Is going to raise taxes.
It's going to raise taxes.
Yep, absolutely.
And everyone's all right with it.
I think the reason that we haven't been lynched already over this project is that it's predominantly free money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Otherwise, people would be up in arms.
Right.
To, to raise that many, that much taxes to do a project like this.
It is good, it's a good project, though.
I'm not saying it's a bad project, but it's not something you raise three quarters of a million dollars for.
So you're, you're looking for a motion?
Sure, if you want.
Heck, I don't know what's in it. I'll, I'll make the motion.
He's not forcing you.
I, I'll make a motion.
He was forcing you, huh?
That, that we, we earmark eighty thousand dollars of potential ARPA funding contingent upon getting feedback from everyone and, 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 and the taxpayers supporting it, uh, to, uh, be able to do, finish the, the municipal refurbishment project. If that ARPA funding is, is not decided to be used, then we take it from grant match. Because that's, we will have the grant match. We'll make sure there's grant match there.
Yeah?
No, I mean, for, do you, or do you want, or do you, or do I say, rather than grant match, modify that to use the ARPA funding? And if that doesn't happen, we will either use grant match or a loan.
Or a loan.
Or a loan. And I can, and I can live, I can, let me, let me rephrase it. I'll make the motion.
Or you can earmark, uh, ARPA, I know, I'm, I'm sorry.
Just do ARPA and come back.
Okay, just make a motion, we use ARPA funding.
Correct.
But no, that.
Eighty thousand dollars.
And if that's not viable, then we'll come back and.
If that's not bad, we'll come back.
Discuss again in an hour.
Joe? Are you keeping, are you already keeping a list of projects?
Oh, yeah, he is.
I have a list. No funds are committed except, well, except for this one.
Except for this, but so put an asterisk on this project on your list.
Now, did you say that the, the only thing you want is the eighty thousand in ARPA?
So Glenn's motion, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, is to allocate eighty thousand of ARPA funds to, um, go towards the town hall renovations.
Yep. The, uh.
Town hall renovation project. There a second?
A second.
Now, that's, that's eighty thousand towards a grant match, right?
No, it's just going towards, it's not a grant match, it's just.
It's just to cover the cost increases as a result of COVID and the timing.
Grant match is already there, it's just silver rungs.
We're not going to say if it's not available.
No, we'll come back and discuss it again if that is.
I wrote that down twice.
That was seconded by, um, Rod.
Yeah.
Um, questions on that motion? Okay, um, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's a lot of money to commit, thank you. It's, yeah. I couldn't find any.
Get it in a box. Just be ready to defend that one.
Well, we, so I did submit a pretty good grant this morning, so. You know, knock on wood, we won't even have to deal with this.
All right.
That'd be awesome.
Grant for, for the municipal building?
For this project, yeah. Uh, cemetery deeds.
Yep, so I have one cemetery deed for Miss Abby Green.
Make, make a motion to sell cemetery lot sixty-five, section seventeen in the Cedar Grove Cemetery to Abby Green.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Glenn and seconded by Jeff. Um, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Is that lot sixty-five, section seventeen?
Yep.
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 Two graves.
Um, budget review. Um, elections.
Can we just sign small or do it here, too?
Who seconded that?
Yeah, I go to the right.
Jeff did.
What?
He seconded it.
This, yeah.
All right, elections.
Can we do the town clerk?
Sure.
Really appreciate it, Chris.
Oh, that's fine, I don't care. Um, page two.
It's been a fun meeting, though.
It's been, you know what? It's been lovely.
Entertaining, entertaining.
Town clerk is on page two. Who wants to go on that one?
Do you want me to give an overview?
Yeah, if you want to give an overview.
So, um, our current town clerk, Suzanne, I think, I don't think it's a secret that she is planning on retiring. Um, we did. Um, I did reduce that salary by almost seventeen thousand, um, brings it down to thirty-seven thousand total. This brings us more in line with, um, our neighbors for starting salary on, on our town clerk. Um, Suzanne's been here for thirty.
Three.
Thirty-three years, um, and she's making fifty-three thousand, you know, almost fifty-four thousand for that many years of experience. Um, everything else, the assistant salary came down just because of lack of use. Um, machinery and equipment, same thing, just we weren't spending it, so I wasn't going to ask for it.
Has Suzanne given a date?
She, she's, her term runs out.
Oh, okay.
She's, isn't that going to run for the?
So, um, I could say a couple things. Um, I did turn in my petition. I am running for clerk. Um, I don't think that's a big secret. I, I figuring it out using a hourly, a forty-hour week comes out to about seventeen dollars and thirty-five cents an hour, which is really in line with Shaw's and Stewart's and I think Whitehall Plywood had a sign starting sixteen to twenty dollars an hour. There is a, and I'm not talking, I just, I should put out there first, I don't care if it's me or Joe Blow off the street, there's a tremendous amount of responsibility in that office for starting pay of, of that low. Um, we've checked around, a lot of town clerks, you know, last year or so have started about twenty dollars an hour. I think Eileen started more than that. I think hers is twenty, twenty-one, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that it really needs forty hours a week.
That's what I was just going to ask.
Um, you know, sometimes of the year it's busy, some years there are three or four elections. I have been in this office in one capacity or another for eighteen years. Um, either as clerk or assistant, or assistant town clerk or as a lister, I've been assistant town clerk for twelve years. My, my suggestion is instead of, you know, instead of just having a very low salary to start, I would suggest putting enough in there so that there's some bargaining room, some negotiation room. Um, but I would strongly suggest, and I'm just putting it out there, that seventeen thirty-five for, is, is not a really competitive wage. Um, and I'm just going to leave it at that. I, I'm, there could be ten other people who are running. Uh, so far I'm it, but that does not mean that a lot of other people couldn't get their petitions in before the end of the term and I may not be elected, but regardless, I, I would suggest that that salary is a little, a little low.
Knowing if it's forty hours a week or not makes a difference, so.
Right, it'd be a different, I'll reiterate, it was thirty, it was thirty hours, for example.
It's always been the goal, though, right, to keep that office open.
Having it at forty?
Well, Suzanne hasn't worked there, worked five days a week and since at least the pandemic, she has been working the hours, but she's been coming in very early. Uh, Castleton, I think, is thirty-five. Um, you know, some towns have two assistants. So, you know, it's, everyone does, it's a fairly busy office, but we now have, as you know, profile is online.
Modifying.
Number of people who come in to look at needs is down. The number of people coming to look at lister's cards is down. Um, you can now go into any town clerk in the state to get a vital record. So, you know, just because you're born in Fairhaven, if you live in Rutland, you can get it there. But that works vice versa, too. I have people coming from Castleton because they're, they live here now to get a birth or death certificate. And a lot of fishing, hunting, fishing license in the day, you had to come in. A lot of people do that online, DMV now, a lot of people do that online. So, you know, it's, it's not as crazy as I remember it being. Um, some of that is COVID-related. But, you know, I think the hours are, that's, I, I, I know that, um, from talking to Suzanne, the town clerk sets her own hours. You know, she, she'll say, well, I, I'm not, I can work, if you insist on me working forty, I'm going to fit it in in three and a half days. You know, that's, there's only so much wiggle room there, but I, I don't, and again, I'm not elected, I'm just kind of, because I've been there for so long and watched the evolution of, of, of the, uh, office, you know, I remember some days you just were out straight from eight to four and never sat down and never had a second. Um, COVID, of course, has changed a lot of, a lot of that anyway, but you just don't see the amount of researchers who come in or the, you know, that's, that slowed down quite a bit. But I would just really suggest, please, I think, I think for the amount of responsibility that the pay is just not what it should be, should be.
So I ask.
Go ahead.
The rookie question, they're saying, because some, some positions, like, because there's the town clerk's salary, you're also the town, the town clerk is the town treasurer, so.
No.
Oh, no, only elected.
They're all elected, those are all elected.
Yes, but, but you, but when I, but, but I look, if you're working forty hours as a town clerk and you happen to be the treasurer, you're getting thirty-seven thousand plus, the treasurer's money, right?
What did Suzanne, I don't know what Suzanne got for either of them, so.
No, I, I'm, but I'm just saying, I think the, the, when I, when I start looking and we do, do the math, I'm just trying to do apples and apples in my head. We have, I, what I've seen is there's been some positions where you look at the salary, then you look at the other jobs that are paid, you've got to put them all together to come up with, this is with the annual salary, because even though you're the town clerk, you don't really separate those, you're doing things at different times right there, so when you're doing the treasury job, you're not doing the town clerk job, so I want to put them all together, come up with an amount, divide by forty and say, that's the hourly rate, is what I'm trying to, in my mind.
Provided that they're the same person.
Person, yeah.
Right, well, and, and they, and I'm just using, they've been the same person in the.
But it won't be the same person.
It won't be the same person this time?
No.
Suzanne's the treasurer, Suzanne's also the treasurer and that term isn't up until, I think, the next year, yeah.
Okay.
So she's going to.
A lot of towns, I mean, a lot of towns, they are the same person, a lot of towns, they're not the same person.
So, so there, so there'll be some differences, uh, okay.
Because there's only thirty-six hundred in there, right?
That's what Suzanne's been making.
As treasurer, yeah.
As treasurer.
Are there other, but aren't there other, are there other fees?
No, there are.
Just ask them a question.
No, now Suzanne is also the treasurer of the school, right?
I believe so, yeah.
So, I mean, but we don't, that doesn't affect us.
What would you say hours of treasurer are?
I, I, you know.
No idea.
I, that's not my job.
No, I know, I just.
I have no clue what, I mean, I.
I think it's less significant than.
Honestly, I, I've said to Suzanne for years, I wouldn't touch it for what you're, what you're being paid. The response is only there is, you know, you've got all that money and, I, I wouldn't touch it.
Okay, um, other questions or feedback on the first draft?
So this is just.
I just, I just want to give my, my little piece of thank you for, for listening and.
Well, this is just academic question, but, uh, what about going back to a fee-based pay? Thoughts as you're not in the position?
Yeah, I mean, Suzanne told me what, what she took in in fees, thirty-some a thousand, I think.
Right.
I think with everything.
Right. I can't remember exactly how it worked back in the day.
Uh, you know what, that was really, I don't remember either. I mean, I know that she, anything that came in, what she got.
The board pretty much matched her, like, the average of last, of the previous two years.
When they moved from south, from fee to salary.
When they moved from fee-based to salary.
I, I don't know, I was just wondering if maybe it should, that would reflect what the job was doing income-wise.
Yeah, I don't know how many towns even do, I have not a clue. I don't know.
It was just a thought that was nagging a little bit, so I thought I'd ask you what you.
Yeah, I, I, I know Suzanne told me at one point what it was. I mean, it's not insignificant, really, you know, I mean, it.
No, it is not.
It does generate quite a bit of money for the town.
Yes.
And that does go into your coffers and then it gets back into the town clerk, but.
Where's the benefits in this salary?
What?
So thirty-seven thousand, does that include benefits?
That's salary benefits.
Where are the benefits and in the budget?
Benefits, there's a whole benefit section.
Okay, under there.
And it's clued in with everything else.
It all went together.
Yeah, so that's just pure salary.
Yeah, that's just.
But that job does come with benefits, right?
A house for, and even, I think even E. Olive Pelkey had benefits.
So, the only reason I bring up the, uh, the fee base is just to talk about it, but, um, I think the original intent of that job was so that, you know, the clerk is in charge of their hours, so if the office is open more, you would potentially get more fees or not. And that's, that's why it's in the clerk's hands, not the board's hands.
Well, I think.
So I just wondered if that would be a good.
Yeah, that's something for you guys to decide. I think, and I'm getting this from Suzanne, that they, the board sets the hours they want or it's a negotiated thing.
Within reason.
But you can't say you need to be here.
Right.
And I, I mean, because, again, I'm on the same level as like a lister, where we're all kind of independent.
If, if you don't put enough time in and, and you displease the, the voters, they won't vote you in the next time.
Voters, they're all voting in, yeah.
Right.
But it's not like a lister where you're just in for life.
That's true.
Yeah.
Other questions, Glenn?
Well, it was one more for you, Joe. When you're saying it was comparable, I know they come out with this thing of, they show you all the compensation for all the towns in the state. And, and are you saying that the salary I'm looking at here, is that for entry level? Median, is that a median range of what is out there? Uh, so that we can base it on experience, where, it's, so get a sense for where that's falling.
Uh, I was thinking entry level.
Okay, so if you had someone who would, who had, was prior experience backup for a while, it wouldn't exactly be total entry level. And the only reason I, I bring that out is I, I looked at, if you were talking, instead of that seventeen dollars an hour, if you did nineteen dollars an hour, comes out to thirty-nine thousand, five twenty. So right around forty thousand dollars, uh, at, for nineteen dollars an hour, and I'm going, okay. Uh, usually when someone, depending on who you get in the job, if you get someone with, that has some experience, uh, you, you wouldn't treat them as entry level, so I'm just.
I, like I say, you know, I'm looking at what, even what Eileen makes as she came in not having experience in, in it. And I think, oh, Eileen's doing a fantastic job. I'm not, I wouldn't do her job for a million dollars, but I'm saying apples to apples, you know, you're still dealing with the public, there's still a heck of a lot of responsibility. But I, I'm just putting it out there, not only for me, but if, if Claire decides to run.
For instance.
Yeah, for instance.
Salaries have jumped so much in the past year. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
If you can drive by the places like McDonald's and Aldi's and see those offers, it's.
All right, so I mean that.
Somewhat comparable.
Was our introduction, right, of that and will come.
Yeah, we'll talk about it for another several hours later.
No, we're not.
Everyone's getting there.
Yeah, no, I seriously.
Everyone's getting home in there. Okay, so, elections.
Oh, not tonight.
No, not tonight, well, we can come back to it. Elections unit? That was pretty.
Pretty cut and dry.
Dry. Uh, town treasurer is the same, that's.
We're sure we got the right number of elections though, right?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, audit department. Page two. What's the audit department? Gotcha. The audit department, that's, that's just our outside auditor?
No, auditing department is the auditors.
Yeah.
Plus our three elected. And the auditor, and the elected auditors.
Oh, okay.
Um, I did strip that three hundred dollars out of there. Um, we haven't used it in.
I don't think you can do that.
I don't, I think.
I don't think we should do that.
Cause it's an elected position, if somebody runs, we gotta be on pace. Sorry, Joe.
No, no, that's fine. So a hundred and fifty?
What is the salary per auditor?
One hundred.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's like a hundred bucks, there's three of them, a hundred bucks a piece. Gonna cut it in half.
Three, three positions, not that they're filled.
So we're putting a hundred dollars?
Where?
It's currently zero, but past it's been a hundred dollars per auditor, and I was proposing fifty per auditor.
That's probably the problem with why you can't get an auditor, right?
Well, I mean, they, they never collected it, but they never did anything.
They never did anything.
It's just a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars.
It's a slap in the face.
Yeah.
Three hundred. Joe, can you put that back to three hundred?
Put the three hundred back?
Okay, um, transfer station.
Joe, just take all your cuts and put them back.
We're gonna put them back and then the number's gonna be like, ooh, that seems high.
Right.
Yeah, take them back. All right, transfer station, page seven. You got most of, uh, most of, there was a slight increase in this, most of it comes from salaries. Dues were up a little bit.
That's SWAC.
SWAC, thank you. Um, and then a thousand dollars, I was anticipating a little bit more for, um, yeah, C and D for demo. We did add a little bit extra for hauling. I don't know what those, I don't know what that increase is gonna look like.
What's the status of this contract? Where are we at in this contract?
This contract, I believe we're in our last year, so.
Twenty-twenty-two, we're.
Yeah, so we'll be re, we'll be issuing an RFP for the auditor, the auditor, this is the last time they'll be doing our audit, and then garbage hauling.
So.
So is that, this year will be a new contract?
This, yeah, this.
This budget year?
This is gonna be a new contract year.
Uh.
Bottom line on that.
I guess you gotta run where you are though.
On, for the recycling charges, I, just a question, I saw the actuals going back with fourteen thousand, sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand. Then our budget for, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two was seven, and then we went seven thousand five. That, that's a big change. What, the, the change was, I was just.
Which, which item you?
Recycling charges, uh, on the bottom of the transfer station.
It's half of the actual.
It just, it just.
Makes sense, Glenn, to bump it up, doesn't it?
Yeah, I bumped it up. I, I didn't match the actuals.
Till like fourteen.
Well, it looked like we didn't bump it up and up. I, I, I mean, I, if the other actuals of the twenty-twenty-one was seventeen thousand, I, I was just saying, so, if that's a realistic.
So we added seventeen.
Trying to understand how, how it's, it was, you know, ten thousand.
That's in Marin.
I think we keep hoping that recyclables are gonna be worth something, is that what that is?
Yeah, they're not going up, no. Um, to be honest, I bumped it up a little bit. I was just sticking with, with what it was. Dropping an extra ten thousand dollars in there seemed a little, um, unpalatable.
But it's what it's been.
What it's been.
Yeah.
Yeah, seven percent of the year.
Does that include steel?
This is all the stuff that you see coming out of the little recycle shack there.
I don't think it's steel.
Doesn't include steel.
No, no, steel pumps are the other ones.
I think that's gonna be in your.
Yep.
Income side, yeah.
Which we should be getting revenue on the other side, right?
Yes. I don't know if it costs us, it costs us to get rid of it, and then we get, uh, money back.
And, and again, I was just, when I, when I looked at it and saying, we used seven thousand in twenty-twenty-one, we spent, it was seventeen thousand. I'm going, that's a, that's a, ten thousand dollar swing is a big swing. If that's a realistic number, it doesn't look like a realistic number.
I think you gotta put in at least another, what, four or five in there, don't you?
Yeah, the fourteen to seventeen thousand are actuals, those are real numbers.
Yeah, I think you gotta be.
You got, you gotta make at least an effort to look like we're looking at it.
Which is what, fifteen?
Well, that, that, it just, it just.
Probably fifteen.
If you're actually, yeah.
If you're gonna, realistically speaking, we, I mean, we might come back and, and, and say we gotta trim something, take a challenge, but fifteen is not a.
The reason, the reason to put it in there though is just so you don't get blown away.
Right.
At the end of the year and saying we, we blew this.
If your budget's really tight, which it's gonna be.
So Joe, can you double that, double that line? Yes.
And do you know, Joe, are we, how, how badly are we in the red? On, and, and you can come back with this information, but how badly are we in the red on the transfer station? Or are we in the black?
Let's see how we're doing. I was, uh, I was gonna say, the transfer station does pretty good, but we're always in the red on, we'll never make our money on transfer station.
Well, we're a lot better off than we used to be.
Right, we were like sixty percent behind.
Right. So we're at ninety-four percent, uh, ninety-four thousand dollars income now at the transfer station, and let's see where we're at.
This is supposed to be.
We're a little, yeah, that's a little ahead. And our actual, oh, look at there, and our actual spend is ninety-five, so you're a thousand bucks, a thousand dollars in the red for transfer stations.
Pretty good.
Beautiful.
It's for the year.
That's shocking.
I'm happy with that.
That's year to date, right?
That's, that's you, that's this year, yeah, this year.
Yeah, this year is to date.
There's seventeen polls left.
I know, longer than spring. Christmas is gonna be a big one.
They only pull in January.
All right, debt management, um, page nine.
Nothing we can do about that, right? It just is.
Yeah, there was no new debt, that is, that is what it is. Okay.
Except for the sewer run.
I'm sorry, you wanted the transfer station to be increased to fifteen thousand? Just, yes, double that for now.
Good catch, I didn't even see that one.
Jeff wants to talk about reserve allocation, page ten.
I do.
Oh, Jeff feels that we must talk about it.
Yeah.
Must say he wants to talk about it.
I kinda do.
Grant match. See, we got money going in already.
Where, where are you starting?
Uh, wherever you want.
Start at the top.
Let's start at the top, yeah. How do you justify cutting Public Works vehicles to eight thousand with a capital reserve program? That we can't fund?
So, so that was cut from eight thousand because we're not saving money, we're not buying trucks on cash basis, and we will never do that. Um, we can save thirty, you could put thirty thousand dollars in that account this year and next year and ten years from now, and then you'll come up with enough to buy a truck.
Oh, so you just.
Yeah, but this is not just trucks, it's, it's equipment too.
Right, you never plan to buy anything with cash again, basically.
Well, for small things, the eight thousand dollars, I mean, eight thousand dollars should cover a little bit, but um, if we're talking trucks, um, or plows, that would, that would cover, you know, half a plow or plow parts. But, um, for the most part, things that we've been buying have been financed, and it felt like double dipping, like we're gonna finance it, but we're also gonna ask for thirty thousand dollars in an account, and it.
I guess I was envisioning moving more towards where we had the cash to buy the things and trying to work towards that versus a full-scale debt capital replacement program.
So I've had somebody ask me, they said, I think we should just save the money and do our sidewalks, and we should save the money and do our, our park lighting, all these larger capital projects. We'll never do that. In all reality, we will never save enough money to buy trucks, to buy four hundred thousand dollars worth of sidewalks, to buy even sixteen thousand dollars worth of park.
You would if you started. It's, it's the same money, whether you bought it and spent it today or saved it and spent it tomorrow. It's, it's the same money, you gotta raise that by taxes sometime.
Yes.
So you, you just kick the can. I guess I wanted to be upfront and say, this is my capital replacement plan, this is how much it costs, and these are the years that we're gonna do it, and you, you know, this is what it's gonna cost. Rather than say, it's really gonna hit in four years after we buy the next six pieces.
So.
Right?
I would, I would say it would be nice to do it in that way, but in reality, there was a capital plan before the plan that we're using now.
Yeah.
Should have been funded. There was a capital plan before that one that I developed that should have been funded. Before that, with the previous manager, there was a plan that should have been funded, and it never is.
They were close, but we kept adding different things. We never gave the capital plan a chance. There was always some new thing that we needed that wasn't in the plan, so it's very difficult to anticipate where you wanted to be. And this is an academic discussion at this point, um, because the idea of saving all that money in one year to get ahead is not gonna happen this year.
It's, yeah, it, just, so ju- just as an example, so I brought my debt book, my big book of bonds and debt.
Just stand there, Jack, you can't do it at home, you sure can't do it here.
Agreed.
The, the annual payment on the loader is nineteen thousand dollars.
Yep.
The excavator is fourteen, the green truck is eight, seven hundred dollars, and the new truck is twelve thousand dollars.
What I'm gonna caution you on this is that you're gonna end up with a nineteen thousand dollar payment forever. Because as soon as that is paid off, you're gonna need it.
Well, yeah, but it would be the same if you used cash. Except you wouldn't say, not you personally, but the town won't save that much money. It just, it, towns can't, they don't do that. Unless you drop twenty thousand dollars, so the place to start would be, let's put in, you know, forty thousand dollars there.
I guess that's what I'm saying.
But every year you have to commit to forty thousand dollars.
Right, but what I'm saying is it's hard to do that when you cut it down to twenty-two thousand dollars. And I know you're looking for places to find money, but it's. Anyway, and my next question is grant man.
You have plenty of grant match up.
I do, yeah, I knew you were gonna say that.
This'll make it.
Before you, before you get on grant match, cause we just spent a lot of time tonight talking about municipal building.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I saw five thousand dollars.
Five?
Yeah.
And I'm going, boys. We, 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 we talked about all the, all the stuff that, that just, just normal, forget about upgrades with an elevator and everything, just the painting, the winterization, uh, maybe, uh, wouldn't it be nice to put some heat pumps, uh, even downstairs in here and, I mean, but not gonna do it, we're not gonna do it with five thousand dollars going in there. It looked, uh.
I mean, you're not gonna do it with fifty thousand going in there.
No, you're not gonna do it with fifty, but, but is there.
So, the, these are all, we, we used to, we used to bump a lot of these up.
Yeah.
With the carryover.
Yeah, which we don't have.
Which you don't have.
Which, well, what do you mean we don't have? We don't have the number yet.
But we, but there's gotta be some carryover.
Wait, no, we don't, no. When is the audit gonna be?
Uh, he told me he should have the fund balanced by the twen- the week of the twenty-seventh, so.
So, the week of the twenty-seventh, we'll have at least the preliminary number.
Yeah.
Then I'll save my discussion.
We have the preliminary.
For the discussions to be held.
Okay, I'll save my discussion for now.
Now you turn?
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, that goes hand in hand with this discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Instead of asking for more tax money, we always did that. I mean, that, that was at least a conversation that people were willing to listen to.
I agree, cause you could use, you even pick a, you can even pick a project and you'll know exactly what it costs, so you know, you're telling people what you're spending on, that's what you're voting on.
But we also knew that the day was coming, that the budgets were getting closer and closer.
Yeah, you're right.
There won't be.
Yeah. There won't always be.
There won't be this money that we can dip into.
Well, unless things don't, don't work out, like, on a project that we anticipate, and then you don't spend the money.
Part of the reason we put it there, it's a one time, it's somewhat one time.
Somewhat one time, right.
I mean, I, I think we all agree that these are low, but.
Yes, I think we need to.
What are we gonna do? I don't know.
Yeah, right.
So I'm, I'm.
Go ahead, I need to.
I mean, we can talk about numbers and then say, in the twenty-seventh, we can say, okay, now let's, we can now figure out where to get those, some of those monies, or we gotta come up with more money.
Well, yeah, I'm comfortable, I wanted it somewhat on record that I, I don't think that we should significantly decrease, but I.
What is your wish list?
I think we should, uh, ask the voters in a separate line for another hundred thousand in grant match.
Oh, yeah.
I, I think, ask a direct question and say, I would like.
As a separate.
Yeah.
Salary.
I, I don't disagree with you.
And, and maybe that should be one fifty, but I just think there's so much money coming, and do it as an appropriation so that it's, it's specifically voted on.
Or a combination of carry forward and.
It's tough to put it in the budget, because then you don't really know if it's a referendum on the budget or because you jumped in.
So what are we talking here? We've got some placeholder numbers here, but when we find out what our.
End of year look like.
And we really should come back and.
Think about it.
See what we wanna ask the voters to, I agree.
Or allocate it to a specific, um, you know, if you, if you are talking about a truck, put it towards a truck.
Right.
Okay, further discussion, when we get more information.
Anything else you got?
Uh, local options tax, part of the budget review.
I think that would help us. I'd be inclined to put it on the ballot again. I think more people understand what it is now, but I just.
And and we we asked, what what can the fireworks do for the town? This is one thing is. Option tax, they would contribute to that. As long if they, the more successful they are, the more successful we are.
Okay, so uh we uh there was, there seemed to be, nobody said, hey, I think we should do this, but there seemed to be some some thoughts around resurrecting the local option tax for the coming. Uh election in March. And I apologize for dropping this on you guys so kind of abruptly. I thought we'd have time to talk about it at the next meeting. But because I have to warn out almost two months in advance, I have to get information out to the voters by next Friday. So we need to have kind of a decision whether we wanna move forward this time or or not at this meeting. Um so not not a lot has changed. It's still uh local option taxes one percent on everything that is normally taxed. There is a few things that aren't like groceries, clothing, fuel oil. You know, that that stuff hasn't changed. Um the numbers have changed a little bit. Uh just using what the state has provided online. And then kind of pulling averages for things that were lacking information. Uh we can expect to collect an annual, uh collect annually a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in local option. Uh this does not count Amazon purchases because those are taxable. The state does not provide that information. So online purchases, there's, they just don't provide that data.
You mean you can't estimate it, but it will come in?
It will come in. I just have no way to know what that looks like.
So Amazon knows when uh a a local resident makes.
Yeah, now you have your boy.
I know it's gonna cost you.
An Amazon report, self-report.
I I, yeah, I know. I wouldn't put a whole lot of faith we're gonna get a lot of money from that.
So out of that hundred and sixty collected thereabouts, the the state does take their cut, their pilot cut. Um and the town would end up ke- keeping about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. There are some other small fees depending on which business and how many times businesses report um each year. Um if they report their taxes four times a year, there's a fee that gets tacked onto that and subtracted out of our money, our money. If they only report once, that fee is cut in, you know, by quarter. So there are, there is some some flex in there that we just have. Based on Amazon and what they report out and then what businesses do, this is our best guess. They had about a hundred and ten thousand dollars annually to the town. All right, so I think everybody's familiar with it. Um what's the, do we wanna put it on the ballot? Do you wanna get that ball rolling or not? I think.
So the biggest question, the biggest uh negative about it, the business owners were worried that it would be cumbersome and have a lot of reporting requirements. Can you?
And that they'd potentially lose business.
Yes.
People would go to other places.
Other places. They might go to, you know, Poland or whatever. Or New York.
Probably not New York. New York's taxes will still be more than.
Do we have answers for those?
Uh so no, reporting is the same. That's.
They just have to change their in their computer profile.
Yes.
That's seven instead of six.
Exactly. Um so towns that do use this, Rutland Town's using it, Killington's using it, uh Rutland City, they're at a two percent tax, not just a one percent. So if we're worried about one percent tax, uh you're paying two over there in Rutland City. Uh Colchester's using it and Colchester, um we did some research and they seem they're. Similar but different kind of town. But I talked to them a lot and they wanna use, they use their money similar to like the town wants to use this money for for infrastructure projects. Not just to dump it in your budget. How close was the vote last time?
It wasn't very close, was it?
Eight, wasn't it? Eight votes?
Eight, it was it was extremely, it's been voted on twice, lost by one or two, lost by eight votes. I I think there was quite a bit of misinformation. Or I I'll take, I'll come back and say not necessarily misinformation, lack of understanding, lack of understanding. And.
We we've had time. Does, can Colchester, since you've talked to them a lot? Can they tell us what the what the blip was when they went from no option tax to option tax?
Uh yeah, they actually sent over a PowerPoint, so I can actually provide that to the.
That that would be helpful. I would expect to see a a blip, a big, small, I don't know. But then it will equalize out and be no longer an issue, but that's my personal opinion.
At the time, we voted on it before. The people in my circle of friends, a lot of them didn't understand and after it went down and there was discussion, they said, we should have voted in.
There's your eight votes.
There's an eight votes.
I I got the same uh comment, people just walking by, looking at the ballot, saying, I didn't realize that's what that was.
I think this is helpful.
We sent out a lot of educational materials last time, but maybe it takes time and discussion to.
There was a lot of people out there, I mean actively politicking.
Actively saying, you know, it's another one percent tax.
And they were spreading, they were, I mean, I had, I was contacted or approached a number of times. Oh, it's gonna affect you. You're gonna do all this bookkeeping. No, we don't. We changed the profile on the computer. It does the rest.
State does it. That's their thirty percent cut.
That's right.
There were some people that in in my discussions that I had was um. That nobody except the people in the town of Fairhaven were gonna have to pay this. That's somebody that was driving through buying whatever, that they weren't going to have to pay. And I said, well, no, that's nothing.
The intent is that we're gonna get them.
That's the whole idea is to have more people.
Get a little bit of tax base covered by those people.
And let's face it, Frey Haven is still a gateway to Vermont.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
Well, it sounds like we wanna put it back on the ballot.
Do you need a motion or do you? Uh I would take a motion if it's going on.
Doesn't it become a motion when we put it on the ballot? Because we have to vote for the ballot.
Uh if you wanna do it that way, I guess. I was just trying to make it clean so that way it's known that this is what. But true. How should we do it?
What's what's your?
You're gonna have to approve the ballot.
Right.
Warning anyways. I just say consensus to move forward with warning those meetings and.
Yes.
And this is the same as last time. There's two articles that need to pass. One for the charter approving the tax and then the other one is saying, saying, yes, we wanna tax it.
I heard a number of people voted like.
Different.
No.
They voted, yes, they wanted to change the charter, but no, they didn't want the option tax and you would just go, and it's because of how it was worded. It's confusing.
That's what we're required to word it a certain way, right?
We passed it. Legal sent over the information for.
For part of our legal.
So this is, this is my first draft of the the information flyer. If you guys have some uh changes or or something a lot changed. Yeah, give me some feedback.
Just make sure it's all fact.
I just make stuff up, Joe.
Is there any?
Yeah. Go ahead, Doug.
Instead upkeep of town infrastructure.
Define that.
Give some examples.
I understand what infrastructure is, but there's there's some people who wouldn't know what you mean by infrastructure.
Oh, Rod just showed me. Is it on the back page?
Yeah.
It is listed some examples.
I thought.
Infrastructure projects are funded and powered by federal estate grants.
I thought the intent was to pay the debt payment on the sort.
The the original one was so that we wouldn't have to, it was for the upgrades at the sewer plant.
Yeah.
Now that that's already baked in, the question is gonna be vague to be asked, will will.
I'd say unbake it.
I would, I would write.
Unbake it.
Is there any reason why it can't be used by that anyway?
Yeah, it it says it's for debt. It it, you know, we, you know, uh Frey Haven, you know, pays off debt like Frey Haven will.
Yep.
Yeah.
The debt's debt.
Well, right, the very first thing, it's oh.
It shows.
Obviously. Well, for me, it's not a problem. But there's people out there who don't understand and unfortunately, those are the people that have the biggest mouth.
All right, so Joe's gonna move forward with that. Say um.
Yes.
Parking law items, anything? Uh board roundtable?
I don't have anything. I'm gonna excuse myself.
Just, I've I've heard more.
Can you? Hold on a second.
Is, does Munder Road need to be on there every time? Are we gonna talk about that or?
I'm waiting for the budget's done, but I absolutely expect to pull up Munder Road and get a decision one way or another.
I just don't wanna just sit there and linger and.
Oh, I I just with the budget here, the we were, we were spinning our wheels with fireworks and others, dog parks and things like that.
You might as well throw it out. It makes us more efficient.
I I uh but I I did quite a bit of research and I know there's some good knowledge sitting around this table. Uh but I absolutely.
I say let the dog park issue completely die. So it doesn't confuse things.
For the roundtable, I've got more feedback on the on our sidewalks and what a disaster. It looks like someone's plowing a field, not plowing sidewalks out there with a.
I don't know. I don't know if that's their fault though. I mean, things aren't frozen up.
Then then don't use the V plow, use a snow blower. It literally ripped the living heck out of everyone's lawn. People go out and take care of their lawns. They treat it like they're babies and we just literally tore street after street after street. How do I feel about it?
No, I got it.
I think someone should have looked back and seen the mess they were making and should have stopped and we should have had some discussion because that. And it's, and I'm not the only one.
No, I saw it. I.
That that, matter of fact, if I did something like that, I'd have the DPW crew out there with with a bucket loader and we'd be picking up that mud. It's gonna eventually turn to dust, going and run down our storm shooters and we'll be hearing how we have to blow out our storm drains and wonder where all the dirt came from.
I guess I wondered if the V plow is too wide for the sidewalk. If we could take the cutting edge and make it narrower, leave the V plows the same, but just shorten the cutting edge. Cause it's like six inches we need, right? It's not.
Uh yeah.
I was, I'll let you.
Some of that's gonna happen.
Some of it's gonna happen. It's just that what Glenn is saying is it was.
Need to be the whole time.
Yeah, the whole, it, someone was remiss.
I I'd like to think that we're better than what we did.
I mean, if they if they just look back and say, geez, I'm tearing up my driveway, like if I dropped the plow in my driveway, which happened last. Last meeting, uh I I went about six inches and said, that's not nothing, it's not right. I get out and I look, holy crap, you know.
And it's not just the sides, as I said before. This V plow leaves a stretch of ice in the middle of the sidewalk. It's more treacherous. Most people, after we plow the sidewalk, walk in the road because it's more treacherous to walk on our sidewalk. I think we are, we have the ability to clear a sidewalk and do it in a manner. That people can use the sidewalk and we're not showing that right now. That's where my frustration is from, along with quite a few, I believe, taxpayers in the state.
Yeah. On a related note, do we have to be like the state? And drop the plow and and just to see how many sparks we can let fly? There was nothing on the roads and they were dropping that plow and the sparks were flying. It's like, what are they plowing? This is our truck. I mean, I know the state does it. They they enjoy doing it, but. They were going right down Washington Street and sparks were flying and they were not plowing a thing. There was nothing to plow. The roads were clear. Like, what are they plowing? And that was the the last storm, the the, well, it wasn't even a storm, the last.
We had the dusting the snow in that same V plow headed down West Street. It was gonna melt before noon. I but I don't know why we had, we didn't, we didn't tear things up enough the first time, I guess, so we went back again. I'm, I I just think there is a lot of room for improvement. I know that there's some feedback that's been given to them. I think we we probably have a V plow that's not the right V plow for our sidewalks and we're gonna try to fix it. With me, I'm saying, only use it if you absolutely had to. Go back to your snow blower. If you have the type of snow that you have to get more aggressive with when the ground's hard, probably that's the time. That that's all.
Okay, um others, anything else?
No, no.
Jeff? Ryan, you all set? Carol, you all set?
Yep.
Okay, um Jeff, review a finance report?
Yep. Uh motion to pay the payroll warrant, thirty-four thousand, one hundred thirty-nine dollars and one cent.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I'd say that was Rod. Motion by Jeff uh. Pay the payroll, seconded by uh Rod. Questions on the payroll warrant? No, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Get that. Motion carries.
Motion to pay the general fund warrant, four hundred sixty-one thousand, three hundred seventy-three dollars and eighty-one cents.
Second.
Awesome, good job.
Right, Jeff, seconded by Carol for the general fund.
Way to get in there.
Warrant.
It's ready.
Jeff, do you wanna just?
Three hundred and forty-two thousand wastewater treatment plant um cost. Plus twenty-five thousand on wastewater loan and uh the twenty-one thousand for the water line repair. On Adams Street.
And it uh just as a heads up, that that came in under budget. So we use those folks who were more expensive than the others and they came under budget, so we're right there where we would have been.
Good.
Yeah. Um any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that carries. Checkbook status.
One million, seventy-eight thousand, two hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty-two cents.
Sixty-two or three?
Two. Uh now you got me, sixty-two.
Okay, um there's two executive sessions. Do them at the same time? How do you wanna?
You wanna do it at the same time? I'll make a motion to go into executive session for labor relations agreement, one VSA three thirteen A one. And also town manager review, one VSA three thirteen A three.
With the town manager. Seconded by Rod. Um all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, motion carries.